Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. Please be aware of the fire exits which are to the left of this room. In the event of emergency, please move in a calm and orderly fashion, and please go down the stairs, do not take the elevator. The meetings are all recorded by a secretary for the purpose of a record, so every time, whether you're the applicant, the person requesting, and/or speaking at a public meeting, please identify yourself each time you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. We will follow the items in the order that appear on the agenda. There are extra copies of the agenda near the door. After the case has been called, the applicant will come to the podium. After that, if it's a public hearing, we'll open up the case. At that point in time, the planning board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. If the case is a public hearing, it will be open for public input, at which time anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding the application will come to the podium. Please remember to identify yourselves along with your address and direct any questions to the board and only to the board. Once all public input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will be given the opportunity to respond to any of the public input. Once all public input has been completed and all questions have been satisfied, the case will be closed to public input and the board will then move on to a decision. No further input will be allowed after that point. And with that, will we call the first case, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First case on the agenda is case number PB 1902-1. Upon the matter of request by Fast Signs of Rochester, acting as agent for Morgan 1238 Ridge LLC and Grand Atlas RRT for signage approval to install window decals on premises 1238 East Ridge Road, Aspen Dental and Well Now Urgent Care in a C business district.
To the podium. My name is Ron Cosmider and I'm the president of Fast Signs of Rochester located on 2761 East Henrietta Road. And I'm representing tonight Modernistics, who is the marketing arm of the Aspen Dental and Well Now facility. Okay, we're requesting to, like was mentioned, to add decals to both sides of that facility. And we supply drawings, I'm pretty sure, to everyone here showing the location and the square footage of the decals.
Were you given questions that the board had from the workshop?
No.
In terms of verification of the size?
Yes.
Yes, that, we did share that with, we did discuss that with the applicant representative, I believe it was Lynn.
Lynn. Here's Lynn.
Okay. Yes.
So, can I come up here?
Okay.
Please, please come to the podium if you're going to speak.
Yeah.
Identify yourself.
I'm Lynn Cosmider. I'm co-owner of Fast Signs and we're located at 2761 East Henrietta Road, Henrietta. I had a telephone conversation today. I believe there was questions with regard to the square footage, and I was told just be prepared to answer any questions. So, and I'm not sure what the questions are.
I've got a couple of questions, too.
Okay.
So, we'll start with Mr. Huber.
Yeah, go ahead.
The first question is just about the first page, trying to, looks like this, 6311. And then down on the bottom, it says, you've got two kind of charts that says graphics with text and then total square footage, and then there's a number there, and then below that, there's another table, and it says graphics without text. And then you have 15 square feet of graphics without text, but I was unsure of what those were because all of the graphics that are on here have text on them. So, is there another graphic that is missing from the drawing that does not have text?
No.
No, it's just the, it's just the text.
So, we're only talking about the 25.734 square feet? So, this was just an error, right? Okay.
This, this is a type of window vinyl which is called perf, which, which has, it's not, if you can see this, it's not solid. We brought a little sample if you want, if you want us to pass this around?
That'd be great. Yes, please.
Just to show what type of material it is?
Why don't you hang on until you're talking again, until you're back at the microphone? But, thank you.
What the material is, is 50/50. It's, it's like, it's 50% transparent. You can actually, if you see the little hole through it, when it's, when it's on the window, you'll, you'll see a, the design, but, but you'll also know it's not fully opaque.
Can I just ask you a quick question?
Sure.
I'm looking at these drawings. What are the actual elevations? I don't know what you mean by front and by side.
The 6311 drawing is the front of the building, which is the Aspen Dental portion of the building.
Is that the north elevation, the south elevation?
South elevation.
The south elevation?
Facing Ridge Road.
Okay.
Yep. The second drawing is the...
North.
No, that's the east side of the building. That's the east side of the building.
This is, okay.
Yep. The third, third drawing is the Well Now front of the building, which faces Ridge Road.
So, that's another south elevation?
Another south. And the last one is the west side of the Well Now building.
And there's no intention to have any of these illuminated?
No. No.
I know that this isn't really this company's purview. I don't notice, and I don't want to steal Jackie's thunder here, but there's no, on the drawings that I'm looking at, any awnings?
Thank you.
And I don't recall if the awnings were actually part of the original design or not?
The awnings were a part of the original site plan approval, so that was part of the building design and the site plan that this board looked at. So, they were actually, the awnings were installed as part of the building permit when the building itself was, was erected. The signage was handled by separate approvals by this board, and then therefore subsequent building permits followed each of those approvals. You'll recall that the freestanding sign was one application, and then the building mounted signage was a separate application to this board, and that's because signage was identified as one of the conditions of the original site plan approval.
The awning then is, is that going to diminish those signs?
To be honest with you, we're not familiar with the awning issue.
Yeah, the awning, we're, we're dealing with the marketing group, and they're the ones that do all the, the marketing for the windows and then the interior vinyls on the walls.
Got it. I know that this is, again, not your issue. We requested illumination not be glaring. The illumination that's sitting on top of those awnings, because they're metal, is reflective back out to the rest of the world as opposed to going down? If we can have a communication with the owner of the building or whoever's in charge of that to either extinguish those with the rest of the light?
I did provide, just so this board's aware, I did provide in writing a letter to the, the building, the property owner, indicating that there was a limitation on signage, the lighting of the building in general. And I did receive a response back acknowledging that they were aware of that condition. So, if that's not, if that hasn't, the compliance hasn't happened yet, then I can, I will certainly follow up.
And I can tell you, you did do some, you did have an effect with them. It's just, these two lights, they're box lights sitting down, just going straight down. They just blare all over everything when, in the middle of the night or at 5:00 in the morning when I happen to be passing by them.
So, the only, only thing that we probably would not ask a property owner to extinguish would be what we would, might deem be security lighting. So, if it's lighting that's trying to keep, if it's not security lighting, then we can certainly ask them to, to modify.
I mean, unless they're keeping the awnings secure.
Okay. Okay. I'll definitely follow up.
Mr. Chair, I thank you for the time.
Thank you. Any other questions? So...
No, I'm good.
So, I have one. It's in regards to the 20 square foot that's allowed per code for window. Zoning 225 Attachment 3 says window 20 square feet, correct?
Yes.
So, the drawings say that they're compliant, less than 20 square feet, but the square footage is, so help me with the, how the measurements are being worked here. You say it's compliant, but yet it shows total square footage of signs 25.734.
Yeah, I see.
And on the bottom, you say compliant, less than 20 square feet. Do I have a follow-up question?
I think it's the, each, each sign, if you look at the breakdown, where it's, the total square footage is actually 12.88867. So, it's, each panel is with underneath the, is underneath the 20 square foot requirement. They're providing you a total...
So, and I just want to ask them, so then a wall, what's a wall? Is 60? And if you add the two together, that's more than 60, isn't it?
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
So, what I'm trying to understand is, when you look at one side of the building?
Yep.
Since they're two different businesses?
Yep.
You have to...
No, so the, the signage requirement is that the each window decal can't be larger than the 20, the 20 square feet. So, if each window decal is less than the 20 square feet, then they're compliant with the code. And there is no, our code doesn't provide a number limit on the building or per window, and so that's, that's why...
So, then the wall doesn't come into play then?
So, any wall mounted signage, you mean?
Well, it just says wall, 60, so I'm just asking. I just want to make sure.
I don't think that applies to the...
It doesn't apply?
...regulations.
Okay. I just want to make sure it's all legit. Okay. With that, I don't have any other questions at this time. Wait, with that, you could have a seat and we'll open it up for a public hearing. Open the public hearing. Is there anybody who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Any questions or clarifications anybody's looking for? If not, looking for a motion?
Mr. Chair, on the issue of PB 1902-1, upon the matter of request by Fast Signs of Rochester, acting as agent for Morgan 1238 Ridge LLC and Grand Atlas RRT for signage approval to install window decals on premises 1238 East Ridge Road, that would be Aspen Dental and Well Now Urgent Care in a C2 business district, I would move that we approve as presented.
Okay. Just for the record, this is a Type 2 action for Seeker. So, I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Murray. With that, take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. One absent.
Two absent.
Two absent, but we have Ms. Murray filling in, so. One, two. Carrie's six, a, zero, nay, two absent. Thank you. Just so everybody knows, the next time, we only have to say case number after the secretary has read, read the full case.
I know, but I just like saying it.
That's what I thought.
I'm getting my TV time.
Okay. You're canceled. Okay.
I'm over here in a supporting role and I can't even say my full lines?
No. Just like on the award show, we start the music.
Right? The orchestra will start.
Yeah. Are you ready for the next one?
Next item on the agenda is case number PB 1810-1. Upon the matter of request by Pastrow Associates, acting as agent for 1733 Ridge Road LLC for revised site plan approval to modify two existing facades on premises 285 Medley Center Parkway and a Ridge Road Plan Development District.
Hi. If you're going to talk to the diagram at all, please grab the microphone, if somebody could grab that for me. Thank you. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
John Bartolati with Del Paz, Del Paz Architects. Let's see if I can get this mic on. Hello? 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 There you go.
Address, please. I'm sorry.
Del Paz Architects, 101 North Clinton Street, Syracuse, New York. I'm here on behalf of Pastrow and the owner for the Skyview on the Ridge project, for seeking approval for the first phase of renovation. What I have here behind me is the overall, let me set this down for a second here so I can use my hands. Overall, just a site plan view of the entire mall, which former Medley Center, lower left corner, or the western side is, was the former Macy's. On the upper north, east side is the former Sears, just to give you some bearing. And we've indicated three separate sections, A, B, and C. Those are basically the different, where the mall was built and broken up into separate buildings by expansion joint, structural expansion joints. And then we have the former J.C. Penney, the Bon-Ton. Our focus here is all on the east, or the western side in the portion A, specifically to the, what we indicate is the north entry and the south entry, north being the Ridge Road side, south being Route 104. And just give you some bearing of what we're, what we're going to be approaching. So, as I flip over, this would be a view looking at the north side, the Ridge Road side, just an aerial view, just to give you a sense of what's there today and, and what we're going to be addressing. And we are essentially going to be looking at the zone from the corner in the right-hand side, which, where the former Macy's building abuts the mall, all the way across heading to the easterly side to where there's a jog in the building right past the entry. So, that is the portion that we're first addressing. Our next drawing, or drawing, you can flip, has a perspective view of looking at that. And what we're proposing to do is try to transform the, the former look of the mall by building an entire facade in front of the existing facade. Essentially, we're coming in and erecting steel framing that would be approximately two feet in front of the existing mall. And on that framing, we'd be supporting perforated metal panels and a series of different type of panels, which I'll walk you through in a minute here, okay? In the center of that, you'll see a triangular form that, again, is kind of working with the existing roof structure that's there. We actually first looked at removing that, and after further investigation, it proved to be a little more difficult than we thought and a little more costly. So, we scaled that back to incorporate the original frame and roof structure in there and still try to transform it either side by bringing it forward and re-cladding it with some metal panels and then flanking either side with the perforated metal panels. I'll, I'll come back to the specifics of each panel in a minute, but let me walk you through the whole thing and then we can get into the details, otherwise I think we'll get lost, okay? On the next page, it just shows, again, highlighted in, with a dash line, the areas that we're actually going to be removing some of the existing finishes or structure of the building to support the new construction. So, you can see, those are the areas planned to be demolished, whether it's finishes or walls and footings. And then on the subsequent page, which I believe it would be, let's see, I'm flipping to page five now. Page five gives you a straight-on elevation and a plan below it to kind of give you a sense of what's going on in and out. So, in the plan view, we have a heavy dark line at the perimeter of the existing building showing that would be the new constructed wall in front of the existing. It is not right against the wall. In some cases, it moves in and out. We're trying to create a nice even face that you'll see from the road, and then we're penetrating in spots to provide some new glass and some new openings into the existing new tenancies. We have a new sidewalk. We're removing all of the existing sidewalk from pretty much the full expanse of our 172 feet, which is left to right. The facades are approximately 30 feet. There's 29.6 on one side, 29.6 on another. In the middle, it jumps down to about 20 feet. And we also are providing, we've got little yellow dots indicating where we have pole lighting, which will show up on the civil engineers drawings as well. The existing entrance that is there is being removed, and that'll be new aluminum storefront entrances as well. So, the glass here is new, the glass here is new. All the glass is the elevation here, and here is also new. And then the, the darker panel that you'll see towards the, either side is, in lieu of a perforated panel, which we have some samples of, I'll show you, it's more of a horizontal line or like a louver, louver effect. As we move around to the opposite side, now this would be the Route 104 side, again, giving you a bird's eye view of the existing conditions, again, starting on the left from the Macy's building, spanning all the way to the right, to about the edge where the building pulls back about 20 feet or so. That is the expanse of what we're trying to cover. And if you flip again one more page to the perspective of that side, what you'll see is an area in the center, which is the new screen wall again, built in front of what's there, that is extending beyond the pitched roof, so you won't see the pitched roof anymore. It is where the carousel side of the, of the old mall. And then flanking either side, we've come back approximately, let's see, probably 45 feet or so, 50 feet to a point here, and then you'll see a gray zone and a gray zone either side, which is indicated to be the existing brick repainted, basically with elastomeric coating, so it'll be a different color. This was due partly from proportions, partly from some cost effectiveness to be able to provide a totally transformed look of that elevation without, without compromising some of what our original concepts were to try to provide for the new tenants that would be there, and also try to make the, make sure that we've made enough of a difference to really transform what was there. And then if you flip up the other, the following page, which now will be on page eight, we're indicating blue color here. We are backlighting the, the perforated panels with an LED light, which will have the ability to change color. And we've modified some of the locations where those lights are from original concepts to really highlight the center zone, the big zone, and provide a lot more light in there. And then either side would not be lit, from the back at least, we would just have site lighting out there as well. And flanking either side, there's existing stairs that are there for egress right now. We're maintaining those. We're not changing those currently. Part of the next phase, we'll be looking at capacity and make sure we have the right egress for, for all of that as well. Flipping one more page, this goes down to page nine. This is, again, just showing, on the bottom photo, you'll see big rectangles dashed with the number fours in them. Those are new windows or new openings that we're proposing to provide in the, in the existing building to open up to potential tenants so that they would have an outside view. We're trying to turn some of the inside-facing mall outside so we have a good presence there. And then if you flip one more page to page 10, again, this gives more of a straight-on elevation that gives you the widths and the heights. We are screening, I think there was a question that came up before, are we making sure we're covering the peaked, existing peaked roof? And it is, we've, we've kept the entrance high enough to make sure we cover that. Site, again, in front of that, we're providing new, new curb, well, new sidewalk and new curbing, we believe, because we believe that we're, just the repair work is going to be worth replacing that curb all the way across the front. Lighting as well, pole lighting, we've got cuts on the pole lighting to show there were some comments on color of light, 3000 Kelvin was a criteria which we can match. They're more of a pedestrian-oriented lighting. They're about a 10-foot pole to give really pools of light down for the pedestrians. And let's see, the next, so the next sheet is really just the engineering drawing and landscape selections, planting selections that we have, then Pastrow has provided. And then last, I have a sample board and some color selections that we're, we're suggesting for the, the new facade. Some of the comments came back originally, I think was, we didn't address some of the base, middle, and cornice. So, we come back and look at that. We've actually changed the panels at the base to be a solid panel and is a composite panel of a different color. Then we'll move up into the perforated panel here and then a cornice across the top as well. It's subtle, but I think it also provides what the intent of what the zoning had requested, and it also gives us enough of a delineation throughout that it doesn't make, break up the building too much and allows us to achieve this. One of the hard things to kind of envision in this is we're looking at a small portion of the, of the mall right now, but there's a lot more of this to be addressed and move forward, and we're trying to give breathing room between this and the next piece and also be able to let them blend together as we pull them together in a bigger picture. The perforated panel, we have a sample right here. This is actually aluminum with a hole in it, and behind that, the intent is on the, the existing surface of the mall behind the panel, it will be painted a light color so that we will then have a light across the back of it, flooding light on the back of, on the wall itself, which will bounce back through that at a distance of about two feet off it. So, you'll have a shadow and lighting and have a good depth through the, through the panels. The base panels will be the darker color, which we're indicating right down here, as you can see on the bottom, and I believe those are called out as E composite metal panel, which, we have three color panels now instead of one monotone panel. I know that was some of the concerns of it being all one color. So, we wanted to keep it in the same tone and same palette, but at least give us some contrast back and forth. So, we have a vertical element on either side that's a little darker, a base tying it together. We've got the horizontal perforations with the back, some of the backlighting on, on this elevation, and just the horizontal perforations with the shadow behind it is going to give a good texture difference as well. And then we have on the, both, both elevations, I'll address the Ridge Road side first, right near the entry, there is a different type of panel. It is a horizontal line. I think it's indicated on one of the previous drawings, to just give it a little more, a different texture, and that is a lighter, intermediate color. And then on the building outside of our screen wall, which would be this portion here and this portion here, that is to be the lighter gray so that we have a contrast as well. And with that, I guess I'll take some questions. I'm sure there will be.
Anyone have questions?
I've got a couple. I mean, if somebody else has. Do you have stuff, Brad?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Richards.
On the south facade?
Yep.
What are we doing about the tri-color that's required in code on the back part of that building? that building?
So we have a base panel, which is dark, right? And then we have a middle panel, which is going to be the aluminum color with the perforations.
Okay.
Okay. And then we have a cornice at the top, which is hard to see in here, which was going to be a lighter color.
And then when I go to the east or west of that configuration, what are you doing?
Here, right here, the existing, that's beyond our construction. So that is just a one color. And we want that to really be the backdrop for what we're setting. So it's kind of like a very lighter color to kind of subdue the backs up and let this stand out in front of it.
So are you asking me not to consider that?
Well, the base material, okay, this is a very small section. We have base is pretty much all of our new construction. And then this is just an existing condition that we're trying to, it's a solid color now. We're trying to maintain that as a solid color as well.
I guess I'd be a little more comfortable if you weren't touching it at all. But you're telling me you're touching it, and it's not going to be code compliant. So are you going to come back to me with something else?
Well, we would, I guess we would look at that as it's in a current condition right now. We're trying to actually keep that in the same condition it is, although the color would be different.
Okay.
Because we're not trying to.
I don't want to dwell on it. I think I have the answer from you. And then what is the life expectancy on the metal materials?
Oh, that's a very, it's over 20 years. I know that. I can get that for you. We can get a 20-year warranty on those.
And then on the, the louvered paneling that I see specifically on the north elevation, where it's giving some contrast?
Right here and right here. Yes.
Is that the same color as the water table?
It is, yes, as the base. That's intent, yes.
That's fine. That's all I wanted to know on that. And then the lamps that I'm seeing, I'm seeing a couple of different things going on here, the street lighting. I see the plan that's here with the light designed.
Yes.
That looks like it's a downward projecting.
Correct.
Okay. And so that's what it's going to be. It's not what is on the other drawings.
Previous drawings, which, right, right. That's been revised.
Okay.
That is most current.
Great. And then the, I understand the north elevation's not going to have any lighting and that you're going to focus the lighting on the entryway to the south elevation. What is the lighting that you guys are proposing for the building on the north elevation that's not going to be lit and then on the areas of the south elevation that are not going to be lit?
Well, other than, well, we have pole lighting out right in front of both of these. So we will get pools of light in front, okay, of the building where the pedestrians will be. Okay. But we're not, we're not trying to uplight the existing other than let a glow come through from the glass from the inside here. There's a lot of glass and skylight here that will be lit, okay, and as well as over here. And then we have pole lights all down the front, but we're in this, the elevation is broken up quite a bit on this side, whereas this one, it's a lot easier to try to backlight it. And when we started trying to backlight this, it was too difficult to get a look that we thought would enhance the look versus it started fighting it because our challenge is we're poking through with a lot of glass and there wasn't a lot of spots to put light left.
Yeah, I guess the only reason for my question was your statement about uplighting it. So that's why I'm asking.
I may have misspoke. Uplighting this?
The parts that were not going to be backlight.
I may have misspoke. We are not uplighting this, this, the south, we're uplighting the south side, not on the north side.
Okay. That's, all right. So that clarifies that for me. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else have any questions?
I have some questions. On the first set of renderings that we saw at workshop, there were some seating options included on the north side. Have those been removed, the benches?
Yes, they have. We had some up in this area here, yes. Yep. And which would show up on, let's go back to one of the plans that has the, could be right here. Yep. Yep. We started looking at the sidewalk layout and where we were putting the people and we are now looking at this spot here being more of a spot, but the owner also is trying to bring the people in and not keep them out. So we wanted to try and invite people inside the building and create less of a gathering space out here until we get the rest of the concept done where we're actually looking at pools of spots that we can put people in. This was very crowded up here when we got done, and it just didn't seem very functional, but we did have them there at first.
The second question I have is again about the renderings. On the south side, it shows islands in the parking lots, which I don't think actually exist. So.
You're probably right in the rendering state. They're not accurate.
I just wanted to confirm that and make sure that the board also knows that that's not actually going to happen.
Thank you for pointing that out, yes.
And then the other thing is, so I know that you're trying to concentrate your efforts right on these two entrances, but the truth of the matter is that we might not have another opportunity to give input on this if we don't say anything about it now. So I'm, you pointed out that you're really looking at section A of the mall, the former mall. And so especially on the north side entrance, the landscaping has been improved on as you face the building, it would be the, the right-hand side. But there is that pocket on the other side, which would be on your left-hand side, which I would consider immediately adjacent to the entrance and part of the entrance that's not being addressed. There's another part also on the south side that's kind of further off. It's still in area A. It's too bad that's not being addressed, but this part here is really close to the entrance. And I was wondering what your thoughts were about that.
Oh, I can speak to that. So I am currently working on an entire facade and a whole new front drop-off zone. And for this tenant right here, we're not ready to present yet, but we are working on that as we speak. So we are addressing that. It's just would be the next, next application.
But it's just not guarantee, you know what I'm saying? It could, it could never happen, it could never come before us, and then we would never have an opportunity to say anything about it. I understand, I understand the way that this is rolling out, but I just want to make sure that we look at everything.
It is difficult to try to get answers on everything. I understand. But I can assure you right now, we're actually, I have right now a storefront here, and I have all this being removed, and I'm working on a layout right now for this right now. But again, you're right, it's under a separate.
And the only other piece that I would talk about is the connection. Here's another dicey thing, right? The roadway that goes across in the front and the asphalt pavement there. A lot of times when smaller, thinking about the aspen dental and the five-star that we just talked about, we wanted a clear designated pedestrian area for people to be able to cross and feel comfortable there. And we don't like the paint because it wears off. So, you know, the, what the past stone group on the other end, we had asked them to put a concrete pad there because it was the cheapest thing and they seemed reasonable to it. But those are going to be major access points to all of the people who are going to be parking in the parking lot. Do you have any thoughts about installing something in those entrances that give a dedicated pedestrian access?
Well, we actually have been looking at that, actually with this tenant as well, okay, and how we're going to do that. I certainly can say I can go back to the owner and recommend or bring the board's recommendations to them. I can't commit that he would do that, but I certainly can bring that forth to him. And I understand, I understand the intent. And, you know, traffic calming is what you want to do. You want to where they cross, and I understand.
And then as far as the landscape plans, I wanted to thank you for making those changes. I noticed that it looks like you use the landscape guidelines, use the paper bark maple and the sweet gum, and those are right off the list. So thank you for making those considerations.
Any other questions? With that, if I take a seat, I'll open it up for a public. Like to open the public hearing. Is there anybody who'd like to address this applicant? Seeing none. I'll close the public hearing. Does the board have any other questions prior to moving to a motion?
I'm wondering what the rest of the board thinks about the seating at the entrances, the pedestrian access, and just their general thoughts about the remaining landscaping in section A.
I'll speak to the remaining, only part of it's in this application, correct? Just a little part in the front. So having said that.
But the future.
But the future has something coming. Personally, I'm okay, but that's up to the board, how they feel. I'm not going to force something until I know more what's coming.
I'm just, I'm saying that you're right or wrong. I'm just wanting to make sure that the board had a chance to talk about it as well.
I don't think I should hold up what we're doing here personally, but that's my feeling.
I think he's looking to say, he wants to put forward the notion that we want to take a look, even though we know it's not within.
I don't know if we can, or if we can, since it was brought up now.
What exactly is the question?
The question is, is the board saying for this part that there's another applicant that he shared. Since we don't know what's coming or potentially coming, the concern is with the current landscape. Some of the board members are saying they want to see what's coming.
Well, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that I understand the situation that we're in, right? That this is a developing project. What I'm worried about is that we approve it like this and this other piece never comes through. And then there's not the opportunity to address the landscaping, which is immediately adjacent to the entrance that we're looking at now. That's my only concern. If the rest of the board feels comfortable, I can understand that and will go along with that as well. I just wanted to make sure that we had a chance to think about that as a board before moving on.
Is it all, it's all the same parcel, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Could we, could we say something that the landscaping that we will see?
Excuse me, Mr. Palermo, can you use your microphone, please? Thank you.
This is under our current purview.
Same parcel. I forgot what I was going to say.
Same parcel.
It's okay.
I do want to.
Hold on one second.
I was just thinking that philosophically, we'd like it to be contiguous with what we do here in the development to the east. Do we not? And can't we make that as a statement of this planning board? And is it okay to do that?
As far as a recommendation.
That's it, a recommendation.
Yeah.
I think there's a good question on the table. And I'm sorry, Mike. The question is, is this part of the parcel? So if you look at the, if you flip back to the first map, if I could ask you to do that. The area that we're talking about is.
It's in area A, so where it says north entry. It's.
Little dot there.
Yeah, yeah. And again, I don't, sometimes I just like to make sure that we talked about it as a board. I'm not really on one side of the other here.
On the south elevation, the painting on both ends that don't meet the code, but they're being touched. But according to what's being presented to us, they're not being touched. But we're being told by the applicant that they are being touched. So do we want to encourage them to go with what the code is requiring? Or do we want to allow it to exist as it was?
May I comment on that?
Yep.
So the zoning code would come into play with things that would require permit. Painting an existing building would not rise to the level of a permit. And so if they wanted to paint the whole, well, if they wanted to paint the building as it stood with making no other change, likely they would be able to do that without planning board approval.
I can grab it, but my understanding and my recollection is that it's three colors. That's what we've asked. And that's what was presented in the code, and that was part of the code that was, I think, approved.
So, yeah, so for the facade, places where the facade is physically being altered, then they're meeting that requirement, it's where the facade itself is staying intact and they're applying paint. And so that, if that was the only action, application of paint, that wouldn't be before the board. And that's the only clarification I want to make. So just as you're, just so you're aware, that would not rise to the level of requiring planning board review.
So they wouldn't have to do any of this. They could just paint the whole thing.
Potentially. They're not doing that, thankfully.
No, but it just.
Couldn't we, could we just condition the landscaping on the other side to trigger after an amount of time has passed? Is that possible? Give them the opportunity to do whatever they need to with this tenant. But if that doesn't wind up happening, that there's still a mechanism to make sure that that landscaping gets addressed if it's left the way it is?
Well, what I think one of the problems with that is that if the tenant doesn't come to be.
That's my worry.
Yeah. If the tenant doesn't come to be and you already put it in there, the next guy along will say, we'll tear it out. I don't want it. And that's.
That's a waste.
It's an expense I wouldn't expect them to go through.
Absolutely agree. My just worries that, like what you said, the tenant doesn't come through and then the landscaping doesn't get addressed.
So just so it's clear in my mind, is that under purview of what they're changing here or not? That's what I'm trying to.
No, I don't think so.
That's what I.
We can call the applicant back up.
I'm going to call the applicant back up. So if you could go to the second page up there. Thank you for getting the microphone.
Page two, you want?
Page two.
Page two. We're talking this area right here, right?
Right.
It is beyond where we're.
Where are you stopping on that side?
Let me show you where we're stopping. So this corner right here is where we're stopping, which is right here.
Yep. Okay.
So this, we're not touching now because we're working on something else over there. So we're going from here. Our screen wall starts here, goes all the way across, stops here, and this is the little piece that we were painting around the corner. That was it.
So I just want to make sure I understand, Bradley, where you're going. You were talking about the whole thing, not just that little one corner.
I'm talking about the area that they point, that they brought up in area A, right? So this is this first section of the mall that's cut out by the expansion joints that they had mentioned. So I mean, like I'm.
This area A is, we're, our red zones are really where we're working. You know, this comes a little bit more this way, but that's about just a tad more. And it's a little bit wider here, but we're not coming all the way over there. The, and maybe I misled you when I first started, our first focus right now that we're working on is a section of A, the first piece, there are these two entries which were before the board for right now. And we're also simultaneously working with some conceptual stuff on the interior here, which we will be bringing forth once this starts moving forward.
So it is part of A, but it's not part of what the application is. That's what I was trying to get clarification on.
Right. But our job as the planning board is to make sure that the, I mean, that's part of our role is to make sure everything fits together.
Oh, I agree, but without knowing what else is coming, it makes it difficult, so.
But I do have a question. When I'm looking at the landscaping plan, it's going beyond the area of A, especially on the south elevation.
This plan right here?
Yeah. See how it goes beyond?
Yes. This one didn't. If you look up here.
No, that part I will agree.
Correct. This one we did because we looked at it and said, let's landscape this. This is a big expanse. We're not, we won't be doing a big change here, and we won't be doing a big change here. We know that in the facade, okay? So we propose to take the landscaping across the whole piece here. Up here, we know we're currently working on something here, so we stopped it there. And that is the reason for that.
I would have no problem with us conditioning any future development with. I would have no problem with us conditioning any future development with that coming back here for our consideration on the landscaping plan, if not something else. And I know that we can, I would be remiss not to turn to counsel on this, but I'm pretty sure that we can do that.
So are we able to condition something that's not before us? That's the question. Well. Since you brought it up, I mean.
So what would the condition look like? What would you propose to put in?
That we would just, any future landscaping plan would come back for our review?
Sure, yeah, because you don't have, you don't have, that, you don't have sufficient information basically to approve that part of the plan.
But they're not asking for approval for that, but, so that's why I'm asking.
Well, yeah, you know, I do think you could, you could condition on, can get, condition on them coming back if they want to make changes to another portion of the property.
So, conditioning. That any, I don't know, future exterior renovation in Section A is too broad. I mean, I don't necessarily need them to come back for anything, everything, but.
I was, what I was gonna ask, I know, Brad, earlier you had the question of, could the condition be reversed? In other words, if something did not go forward within a certain time period, so you give a year, so planning board approval is good for a year unless an extension is granted. So if, and by the expiration of the planning board's decision, if no other action's been, come forward that's related to that, that piece, that you'd ask this applicant to come back to the board to finish the landscaping.
That's basically yes, what she said.
Okay, so it's almost, it's a condition of.
Or still conditioning it under the same guidelines that we always condition everything.
Correct, it's.
So it's no different than how we would normally act.
Correct, but in this case, it's, it's a failure, no change would require them to come back to the planning board to come up with a plan of how they're gonna handle that area. And if change occurs, then that would, that would come forward.
I don't have a problem at all with what they're saying. It makes sense not to have to make them do this, to rip it out, to change it out. I just want to make sure that if a year from now, nothing has happened there, that we have the ability to do something about this unfinished landscape area.
Yeah, I'm hearing two different things going on there, but.
I think.
I'm willing to do whatever this board.
I think I'm gonna need some help with how we word this, so.
You're gonna want to be very clear about which portions of the site that you're approving changes for and which ones you're not, and why. And you know, you can, you can always have reasonable conditions on your approvals. This sounds to me like it would be reasonable, but you have to be very clear about why you're doing that.
Yeah, I, that part I have no problem with. I just want to make sure that in a year and nothing has moved, that we're not requesting that they come back here and have to do something, that makes absolutely no sense.
That's my concern exactly. A year has happened, nothing has, nothing has happened, nothing has come to change. We don't have another opportunity to say anything about, we may not have another opportunity to say something about this pocket, which is an important part of the facade of the building.
Condition it on going forward, that we take, that this board take a look at the landscaping plan as they go forward with their progression on the building, that's when we have a better sense of being helpful to the community.
Okay, and then the other things that I wanted to bring up for a board discussion is the seating at the, that was removed from the north side of the building and the pedestrian access across the driveway, the road.
So I think at the workshop, if I recall, the applicant stated since he's not sure who the tenant is, he's not sure the tenant's gonna want seating, he's not sure the tenant's gonna want people walking. And then personally, I can understand that depending on the kind of business, they may not want that.
Anyone who drives there and parks in the parking lot is still gonna have to access the entryway of the building. So even if.
Are you talking about across, so the reason, where the context it was brought up was the people that are walking across the parking lot to get to the McDonald's, the Burger King?
That's not what I'm talking about.
That's not what you're talking about?
I'm talking about anyone who. Parks, right? Anyone who parks in the parking lot and goes to enter the building. Almost all of them are going to enter through these entrances. So it would be a good idea to have some type of pedestrian, demarcated pedestrian access point across the road, so that they know where, so that all the pedestrians are encouraged to cross the road at the same spot, feel comfortable doing so, because they have an identified area to do it, rather than them crossing willy-nilly anywhere.
Once again, isn't it outside of what they're in front of us for?
They're the ones who have decided, I mean.
They're making the entrance, so I don't know that that would be outside of our purview to make a safe entrance.
Can I address the board?
Hold on.
They would be up to the chair.
Yeah, yeah, hold on, let us figure, finish, so I just want to understand, is all of that true?
What?
I just want to make sure, so currently, the parking lot is not in front of us or the driveway area in front of the, where they're ripping up. What I think I'm hearing is, because it's an entranceway.
Is it on the same parcel? I'm not sure why you're saying that it's not in front of you.
Yeah, it's on the same parcel.
It's on the same parcel, I think you have jurisdiction to.
So even though it's out here, that they, they're not doing anything out here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I would think that would be a safety issue.
Yes, you can address the board.
I was just gonna comment on, malls are a little bit of a different animal with how you cross traffic. And there's a ring road around a perimeter of a mall, and it's designed, people cross pretty much anywhere along that, because they come from their field, straight across and then walk to it. Generally, I think what you're referring to is creating a demarcation somewheres at the concentrated points, which would be an entrance right here. But generally, people won't walk to it, it's just a identity for traffic to calm as they come through there. The nature of people is, they usually take the shortest route that they can, if they park here, they'll cross here, instead of walking horizontally across here, so that, I think that the intent of what you're saying is right. But the traffic flows and patterns, people usually kind of take the shortest path of least resistance when they're walking across. It's our experience at least.
That's kind of like trying to judge a bridge, trying to judge if you need a bridge by the number of people who are swimming across the river. Like, I, I think that this is a main entrance to the mall, and whether people are using it or not the way that it's supposed to doesn't mean that we should overlook the needs of those people who are gonna be parking in there, I mean, I'm just one person, but I think that we've made.
I think that doing some sort of demarcation, I mean, any of us can go over to the Lowe's at, or in Webster, and they've got basically huge ramps that you have to drive over.
The Webster one, yeah.
To, and that's for safety, and that slows that traffic way down. I never see anybody flying through that place.
I guess my question is, are you gonna have handicap parking?
Yes, we will.
If you have handicap parking, wouldn't it be reasonable to have crosswalks for these people to cross through?
Yes, we will.
Okay.
Okay, and then, again, an item that I'm not necessarily wed to, but just want to make sure that the board has had discussion about it, is the benches. Wanted to make sure what people's thoughts were about that, so that we could have the discussion. I know that they want to have people inside of the building, but it seems like a reasonable feature to me. It doesn't seem extremely expensive. Anybody who's waiting for some type of rideshare, a bus, a pickup, a drop-off, might like to wait outside. Just not a hill that I think that is incredibly important, but I think it's worth our discussion.
I can tell you that first day of spring, they're all gonna be outside, they're gonna be using the stairs, they're gonna be using someplace.
Weather change, they'll want to be out. Go downtown, that's where people are in the spring, outside.
Right.
I, that's all I've got.
It was plenty.
Well, I think that the reason we're on a board so we can have these discussions is make sure that everyone's put their opinions in, and whether or not it's the same as mine, that's fine, but I think that it's good for us to talk about it.
You did, you led well.
Thank you.
So with that, thank you for sitting down, is there any other questions for the applicant?
Did you ever let him get back there? Did you ever let him?
Yeah, he did. He did. He wanted to know if you ever got back to me, I said you did.
Brad, to your point with the benches, the only concern I have is smoking.
I thought about that.
People use that as a place to sit and smoke.
They were, so on the old plan, if they're put in the same spot as they are now, I don't know what the rule is about how many feet you have to be away from a doorway, whether that's a town code or.
It's actually a state health code requirement, and I, I would be remiss, I wouldn't want to try to quote the, the distance. I haven't thought about what it is, but if, I don't want to say it as part of an answer to you all and then be wrong about it.
My recollection from the workshop testimony, or the information that was shared with us at workshop, was the applicant, and I don't know how he's doing it, God bless him, because it's a violation of state law, he was gonna put the smoking inside. The perimeter of the complex that is, if he's figured out something, I can tell you there's some hospitals around here that would love to know his secret.
I think that if we just say to place them, but place them whatever the distance is from the health code is from the doorway, that way if people do choose to smoke there, that it shouldn't be an issue, because it's however many feet they have to be away from the door by health code.
I think that no matter where we place some people.
Yeah, but at least this is.
They're gonna choose their own behavior.
A step to try to mitigate that.
And.
At Rochester General, you go to the street.
To be honest with you, so I think we're getting beyond the bounds of that, is my recollection.
So, anybody else have any other, anybody want to make a motion and bring forward something?
Let Brad do it.
I'll start the motion, and I'm willing to take amendments to it.
I just want to make a comment, though, that seeker was completed through a coordinated review with the Arundel Lake Town Board, acting as the lead agent, so we don't have to go through seeker.
And Mr. Chair, on PB 1810-1, I would recommend that this board approve going forward with this, as approved with the following amendments.
One is that benches, how many do you want, how many do we need? One, two?
If you want to know the truth, I think that the benches should not be a condition, I think that they should be a a suggestion of this board that they go out.
So then, no benches conditioned, then the, then the first condition would be the pedestrian access point across the ring road?
Yep.
And what would the board like that made out of? Is it paint or is it concrete?
I think it should be made out of a, an industry proven area that would, or substance that has been used previously, that has proven to be calming to traffic, right? That's what we want to do, is calm traffic and introduce a way for pedestrians to feel that that's a calm place. I don't know the right words for that. Bernie looks like he's gonna help me with it, though.
Bernie's struggling with it, so. Because Bradley asked a question regarding, do you want paint? Do you want stamped concrete, take it where you were going? Of course, I would love it to look beautiful, which I think someday this is all gonna be there.
No, I know it is.
What's the minimum, I would ask, what's the minimum we want them to do to ensure there's pedestrian access? If the board feels so strongly on it that we need to have something, it could be speed bumps, to your concern, I think, might meet the need, or it could be striping, but I think if we're gonna make a condition, we should know what we want to say.
Exactly what it wants to be.
I don't, at this point.
My, I don't like paint. We've told other developers that they can't use paint and have to use stamped asphalt or concrete. And even at the same parcel, we told them that they had to put in concrete. Especially on a ring road, it's gonna be subject to a lot more traffic. I noticed that the paint that the planning board had, the Starbucks and Chipotle put in, is gone.
The what, I'm sorry?
Chipotle.
Chipotle and Starbucks complex, we, that was painted out with pedestrian crosswalk, it's gone, like it just wears off. And that's not on a heavily used ring road like this. So my preference would be for it to be either the concrete pad or the stamped asphalt, up to the applicant's choice. But that's me, I am not for people, so that's why I'm asking for everybody else's opinion.
Either one of those are acceptable for me, I don't know how.
Stripes are acceptable to me if we're gonna force something, I'm thinking economics at this point, but.
I'm thinking about safety of the community as they're entering and exiting the.
Stripes would do that.
And what, what is, what does that cost?
Especially if there's gonna be a community center there, that people might use that entrance, that could be small kids. I mean, it might have its own dedicated entrance, it might not, I don't know.
I thought you told us at the workshop, it was gonna have its own dedicated entrance.
Yeah, and either way, we're gonna ensure that those people are safe, especially children, right? So we're gonna, why don't we try and keep it consistent with?
That's a good idea.
All right, so my proposed condition would be that there is a pedestrian access point installed across the ring road in front of the north and south entrances, made out of either concrete or stamped and dyed asphalt, at the choice of the developer.
Sounds like a great amendment to me.
And then the second one is about the landscape island, or the landscaping on the north entrance, and that there's some kind of mechanism for it to come back to us within a year's timeframe if the tenant doesn't pan out.
So describe that parcel.
May I offer a sentence?
Yes, please.
If the adjacent tenant space has not been developed within one year, the owner will come back to the board with a landscaping plan for the area east of the redesigned north entrance.
The adjacent tenant space, say it one more time.
Well, we have it written down for the record as part of Michelle's notes, but if the adjacent tenant space has not been developed within one year, the owner will come back to the board with the landscaping plan for the area to the east of the redefined or redesigned, excuse me, redesigned north entrance. And that, just to clarify, that is what you, that is what I, we heard, yes?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, just making sure.
So I just want to get clarification on the first one. Are you saying as they move forward with the other tenants, we're gonna require the same type of stamped concrete or it depends?
I don't think so, I think that these entrances are more, I mean, knowing that we, knowing that we don't know what's gonna happen in the future, but I would say that these two entrances are more significant than any other entrances that may possibly be developed on that site, because these are the primary entrance and exit points of the entire complex. So for that reason, I think that the extra investment in a material that makes it clear to pedestrians that this is where the developer would like them to enter and exit, and that this is a place where cars should stop and slow for people who are entering and exiting is important, because these are the primary entrances and exits to the entire complex.
So your thought process is, even if it's only one tenant, it would still be the main entrances, and that's why you want the demarcation? So even if it stays one tenant, that's why I was asking about the other tenants. Let's say that stays one tenant, are you gonna force something upon the other tenants, since they would have a different entrance and exit? I'm gonna go back to the, the question about, if the community center has its own entrance, we're gonna want certain things.
Right, but I think it would depend on the size of the entrance, what the entrance was, this is a main entrance right now, and we're talking about safety, I'm not talking about cost of anything, I'm talking about community safety on this. And that we move forward on that basis alone to keep the community safe. If there were other entrances and exits for us to consider at this moment, I would certainly want to take a measure of that. If it was an employee entrance only, that might not need the same sort of benefit that a main entrance for all employees or all public.
I, yeah, so I'm not opposed for those reasons. What I'm opposed to is we're demanding the more expensive out of all the options, so...
Well, we...
What's the safety behind that versus...
It's nothing more than we've really considered for a multitude of other applicants.
And we've let others do the painting, so Georgetown Plaza, Rubinos, they're all painted.
And that, and that is proving to fail.
They, they were painted, uh, yes, but that was after, like, you know, I was, I'm only one, I can only speak for me.
No, so I'm only asking from the safety perspective, why don't we leave it to the developer to propose back something versus dictating what it has to be? That's...
Well, I think that we know that the paint doesn't last.
I think with the plowing, it's not gonna last.
No.
Wouldn't it be nice if you could make it so that if they do paint, that it'd have to be an hackable thing?
I mean...
If needed, if needed.
You could do that, but that's an, that's an extra burden on towns, I mean, you know, you have to go out and enforce it. And if, if it was just done once and done well...
And I'm only asking the board to think about the financial impacts that we're imposing.
I understand.
Yeah, I think that this is a very insignificant cost.
Also, this is a different type of, um, you know, uh, this is a more robust, um, thoroughfare than any of the other properties we've looked at. Rubinos did not have a ring road around it. So this is, uh, a enormous parking lot that could be full of vehicles that is coming in across what is essentially a smaller road, which has access to the expressway. Uh, I know sometimes I will get off the expressway and cut through there just to get over to Ridge Road when I have no business over there. So there's going, there could be...
I used to do that before there was potholes, but...
Through, there could be, uh, through traffic, you know, people who are just getting off of the expressway and going over to Target or any one of those other operations over even on Ridge Road that might be cutting through that area. Um, whereas a Chipotle parking, parking lot or, uh, Rubinos parking lot is really only the, um, the traffic that's gonna go into that plaza where this is gonna have a lot more traffic in it or has the potential to have a lot more traffic in it.
I, I'm not opposed. I was just opposed to having to dictate what it had to be, so I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but...
No, I think that we're fine with it.
Well, I know how you two feel. You fine with it? Mary? Okay.
I'd also like to put in a condition on the lighting that we use the Passaro associate, um, C100 drawing for the streetlights.
Since that's part of the application, I don't know that it needs to be a condition.
Okay, just, I'm just seeing two different things.
And so if you want to, if you want to actually, rather than it being a condition, you can have that be part of the approval, that your approval, the approval is based on the drawings and reference that, it can be referenced to that, that sheet.
That's what I'd like to do then.
Okay.
I'm sorry, where'd you see the difference?
There's, on the Passaro drawing, and this was in testimony anyway, and then if I go to, um, the applicant can probably tell me the number quicker.
To number eight?
Page five, you'll see that there are some dots there that show different lighting on the, on the upper half of that. Then we're actually are in the Passaro.
Okay, so you want it as a, you said not a condition, but a what?
You just make it part of the motion so that you're approving the plans as submitted and then you can reference the actual, the architectural renderings by Delpas and the, um, the landscaping and lighting plan submitted by Passaro. So there's two separate plan sets that they're referring to as part of the overall application. And that's appropriate to do since this is the second round of, of drawings submitted to the board, so it's good to always clarify. And Michelle, just for the purposes of the, the board's comfort, always references the plans that the board acts on as part of the decision.
And then the uplighting, I would prefer that any additional uplighting come back before this board for approval. And what was testified to?
Anybody have an issue? I don't have an issue with that.
I'm sorry, Alan, what did you say?
They weren't listening, so of course they have no issue with this.
Could you please repeat what you said?
The, any additional uplighting other than that which was presented or testified to come back to this board for approval.
Well, wouldn't it have to because it's not part of the...
No.
It depends on how, I, I would, if you're concerned about it, I would have it be the condition because the, um, otherwise it might just be reviewed administratively, it might just be a building permit.
So any additional uplighting on the building itself, right? On the building facade?
Yep.
And, uh, we, just, I want to confirm with staff, we had talked briefly about bike stuff at Bike Rack at this, but, at this, um, location. But we thought that we had changed the code to have interior bike parking, so it's not something we need to worry about.
Correct, so as long as, um, bicycles can be accommodated somewhere on the site, if you have, um, my, my guess would be that there's plenty of space available indoors. If that was something that, um, we could, uh, we'll make sure that that gets accommodated, they've got to be able to accommodate bikes somewhere on the site.
Okay, so I have three conditions. Anybody remember any others?
It was four, you should have. Oh, the, the, um...
I have pedestrian, let me read them. First condition was a pedestrian access point installed across the ring roadside.
Yep, but then, then the next, I was gonna say, if you want to just hit the topics, we can, the, the, the ring road or the pedestrian access was one.
The adjacent tenant space.
Correct, for the landscaping was number, was, is the, a second one, lighting approved.
I got any additional lighting was the third.
Yeah, oh, apologies, this should not be, this is part of the, that's our mistake. Never, you are correct, sir. I do, I do apologize.
There is a fourth, though.
Could you please say that a little louder?
I do apologize, sir. We had something, we had something written in the wrong spot.
He's never gonna hear that at home, so say it again. Um, the, the fourth would be the recommendation that ban, benches be placed at least on the south, south exposure.
So it's a recommendation?
Or south elevation, a recommendation.
Can we add a recommendation as a condition or just...
No, it's either a condition or a recommendation.
It wouldn't be a condition, so, yeah. No, it would not be.
That would be, okay.
But it would still be part of the approval process.
So say it again, Alan, recommendation that benches?
That benches be placed on the south elevation at a minimum.
I think you mean that they were originally indicated on the north elevation.
Right.
But either, I mean, yeah, or just, just leave it as benches be places.
Recommendation that benches be placed at both entrances where appropriate?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm gonna read these. I'll make the first motion. I'll just look for a second. Regarding case number PB 1810-1, we approve with the following conditions, and I'll just go the high level since we have them written down. The pedestrian access point installed across the ring road made out of concrete or stamped asphalt. The second condition is the, if the adjacent tenant space has not been developed within one year, the developer will return with a redesigned north entrance.
A landscape.
And it dealt with landscaping.
We don't want them to redo the whole north entrance, just come back with a, uh, landscape plan for the area omitted on section A.
Just a minor detail. The third condition was any additional lighting on the building facade must come before the planning board. And a recommendation that benches be placed at both entrances where appropriate.
Before you have a second, could I just say that we would, um, do that as presented and testified to?
Yeah.
The benches?
The entire process is being approved as presented.
The application as presented.
Oh, with the architectural drawings by, um...
I think just saying it as presented and testified to should be enough.
Do I have a second?
Second?
Yeah.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Six aye, any nay, two absents. Thank you for doing business in Aronikoi. I think it really looks great, so can't wait to see it.
Thank you, guys. Yep.
We do?
Yeah, do you want to? Yep, you were, you're always here.
I don't have the minutes. Oh, those are the ones we went over at the, um...
Last meeting?
Yeah, we did it at the workshop. Are these last meeting or do we? We need to approve?
Yes. Mr. Chair, on a motion, I would like to move that we approve the minutes from the January 28th meeting of the planning board.
As is?
As is.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Palermo, all those in favor, please say aye.
Just say aye, Mike.
We're, we're approving the minutes from January 28th. Any nays, two absents. Thank you. Any other minutes? Anything else before the board? I move that we adjourn. Do I have a second?
I can.
We hope you enjoyed this presentation of the Aronikoi Planning Board on ICAT Government Access.